I just want to read something that I've seen on my thread. Okay, this is, this is just somebody's opinion. It says Ohio State. Echo. Stop. The Ohio State University sold its soul today. It's not surprising given the leadership of the board and in the office of the president. OSU is no longer an institution that supports diversity. It no longer supports the inclusion of diverse students and faculty and it no longer supports equitable opportunities for all. Women, non-white students and faculty, non-straight students and faculty should look elsewhere. It is a sad day for Buckeyes. Okay, now I want to say, don't they already have something in place about discrimination? Based on certain attributes? I thought they did. So if we already have laws against discrimination based on age, religion, all that stuff, why do we need D E I? Uh, I thought I thought that it was up to the employee to have that in place. I didn't know it had to be federal or state. Because I could understand having, and I think we should, I think uh, people should have some form of um diverse classes so people could understand other people because you're not just working with all white people. You're not just working with all black people. I mean, we should be able to get along with other people based on knowing them and their culture and uh and their potentials because when you go to work, everybody is not there to be your friend, for one thing, and they're not there to uh submit to you. They're there to do their job and to be respected and be a team member. That's the way it should be. But you know how that goes when people, oh, my nose is so itchy. Oh, my God. What is on these glasses? Yeah, my nose is so itchy. If that means anything, please let me know. Um, okay, here's something else. Uh, somebody else is saying Elon Musk is robbing the richest man in the world. Okay, why do the richest, they keep saying the richest man in the world? I'm gonna look that up. Enough is enough.
One of our seniors who's worked their entire life about how much they have to survive on a day.
I do not.
Sixty-five dollars a day. We're not looking into Elon Musk's eight million dollars a day. This subcommittee chaired by Marjorie Taylor Greene and the House Republicans is looking into your grandmother's sixty-five dollars a day. Let me be clear. I think we would all support taxpayer savings. Look into money we might needlessly send to billionaires and big corporations, find taxpayer savings and send it back to your heart.
Okay, what I understand is why do rich people need more money? Why do they feel like they need to take away our little money? What is that? What kind of thinking is that? I don't know. Okay, now somebody else is saying today Elon Musk called social security the largest fraud in history? The world's richest man is coming to steal your social security. Okay. Like I said, this government, they, they give it to you, they could take it away. Just like that. I mean, that's what they trying to do. Now, whether they do it or not, that's another thing. Okay, someone on IG said woke is an acronym for whatever offends cl- claim clans men easily. And I can't think of a more perfect description of how they, that the word has been weaponized. Yeah, when I start hearing this woke, woke, I'm like, woke, what? Woke, what is this woke? That's stupid. This is a good point. Dear racist, your child needs a pint of blood. Choose which one. Are you gonna ask, is, is he a Democrat? I only want blood from a Republican? Some of them probably would say that. I mean, some of them are racist to the core. They'd rather die than have the blood. Oh, they'll take your life. They'll take your blood. They'll spill your blood, but they wouldn't want your blood to save their life. So it's a lot of stuff going on. It's, it's a lot of stuff going on and we didn't got caught up in this doggone clown show again. Now, a lot of stuff is gonna get thrown on the back eye. Back burner, okay? Just like COVID, when a lot of stuff didn't get done. The country pretty much came to a halt. Uh, it's, and it's like that now. I was on a call with uh our congressman, third district congressman. Um, shout out to Betty. And I wanted to ask a question. And I was on there and I was listening to everybody. And and I'm like, okay. This is uh boring because I'm just hearing the same stuff that they say on YouTube all the time. I want some, I, we need to discuss what else is going on out here. But I'm like, isn't the, the courts taking care of all this craziness that's going on? That's coming out the Oval Office? So what, what else is going on? So I wanted to ask about when, who's gonna be picking up all this garbage? I'm tired of ri- riding around these streets and it's garbage everywhere. I mean, piles of garbage. I mean, like a street loan of just garbage. Who's gonna pick that up? What is they waiting on? Yeah, and this was just some of the stuff that they was talking about. Let me try something else. I didn't get a chance to ask my question. Okay. Okay, now she, Joe, um, you know, she did, that, that's a very important thing, okay? But she, she's just, you know, a congressman. We, we need somebody stronger. We need the course and stuff to talk about that, but I wanted to talk about this trap. There's other things out here that needs to be done and addressed. All we talk about is him and what he's gonna do, what he's gonna put in the shop and that, and, and that does not we still have to keep living. Now, as far as the Board of Education, I looked it up and you know, the Board of Education, it then went through a lot of changes. It had been through a lot of changes over the years. It started back in the eighteen eighties. The concept of Board of Education in the United States dates back to the eighteen hundreds. Where the first uh boards were established and to oversee the growing complexity of the educational administration. Now, when they started having these uh legislations and, and building a infrastructure of uh education. It was already a division. It has never really been focused on all children. All children. Uh, the first steps toward establishing Board of Education in the United States was taken in sixteen forty-seven by the Puritans of the Massachusetts Bay Colony. In the mid eighteen hundreds, the concept of Boards of Education gained prominence as a way to provide quality education to all. Early boards were often community-driven and reflected the values of the local population. Now, when they say, this is what they do, they say all, but you know, in the eighteen hundreds, you know, black people were still slaves. Were still being looked upon as street-fist of a person. So when they say all, that's what we don't, that's why we keep forgetting. We need to stop trying to act like we are part of the all. Part of the American citizens. We need to stop that. An educational system evolved, so did the roles and structures of the Board of Education. In the twentieth century, Boards of Education, Board of Education began to focus on standard-sized curriculum, teacher accret- accreditation and equitable resources distribution. Now uh, the United States Department of Education.
Today is Thursday, February thirteenth. I'm not quite sure how to help you with that.
Goes back to eighteen sixty-seven when President Andrew Johnson signed legislation for Department of Education. It was a, it was seen to collect information and statistics about the nation's school and provide advice to schools in the same way the Department of Agriculture helped farmers. And they seemed to get away with that when, when uh the uh, the white people started putting up a fuss about black people going to school with them. And and then all this court stuff like Brown versus Education and and uh, like people wanting equal schools. It turned. It, it really turned against itself. And see, we, we, we always fall into that trap. Stop trying to intermingle with the white people. We should have started our own Board of Education. Just like back there where like uh Mary Bloom, she started her own school. A lot of black people started their own school. Why didn't we start our own black uh Board of Education? It didn't have to be called a Board of Education. It, it could be called the Board to help black people get better and lead this country. It could have been called something else, but we should have had a focal point for black students to build. We should have been building schools. Because see, our problem was, we were so fixation on trying to be like white people, trying to have what they want, trying to have mansions and, and, and all this nice stuff. What's the use of having all this nice stuff if you still looked upon like dirt? We should have been working on building a better future for our children. And that's it. Why raise all this money, build all this nice elaborate stuff? And you're still gonna be, and they could take it away anytime and you still treat it like dirt. The Board of Education. I remember, you know, when I started having kids and had to deal with the school system. Oh, it was a hundred percent different than it is now. And uh, the Board of Education used to be a focal point, you know, when admitting students. And when you go to change schools and to enroll them in schools, you went to the Board of Education, you talked to people, you submitted your information. And uh, and opening the school was a happy anticipated event. Now they closing up schools. And um and schools were where dreams start and the mind opens to new adventures and community and social laws are taught. And unknowingly, we didn't know what was happening behind the scenes. And up on the hill. For, for instance, when they passed that no child left behind law, that that was the beginning of the end. When you have incompetent people running stuff, it's never gonna end well. And we didn't know that we were being set up. For one thing, we wasn't taught that only power matters in this country. And the school doesn't teach you power or give you power. And most parents, you know, like mine and a lot of us, our parents only had like a fifth grade learning education. And no knowledge of the government and how it works and that uh the society is ran by psychopaths. And therefore, they and their children become a victim of this despicable deception of an education system. For one thing, separating children. Schools supposed to be there when you, schools are there in place for you to learn how to maintain an adulthood. But to them, it's more than that. That power structure. And our black parents didn't teach us that or showed us that. Because my parents were powerless. Yeah, they had a good job. Yeah, they had a nice home and a nice area. But no power at all. And and the schools were based on skin color. And the infra- infrastructure of the schools were based on the color of the skin of the occupants. And their future goes because some schools already look at you like, oh, yeah, you, you're gonna be number two servant for the rest of your life. And some schools look at, oh, yeah, these are corporate. And then we have these black colleges. But the only thing about these black colleges that we are not mentioning is these people that go to these black colleges, where did they come from? They came from European ran elementary, middle high, junior high, you don't know what they are now. Elementary school ran by European, middle school, same thing, high school, same thing. So they have already been set up for failure. They've already been taught by the enemy. And when they get to these black colleges. Tell me. What are they doing? What are they doing? You have all these colleges and these sports fanatics, you know, you, you go down south, I mean, every game is full to the brim. And yet these cities are still the poorest in the nation. Disturbing. These cities, the poorest cities in Mississippi, Tennessee. What are these kids that's graduating from these colleges? What are they doing? Where are they going? Are they building up their city? Don't sing like it. Uh, it, it don't, it, and see, and see, the Europeans, they're looking at that. They are grading us. Now they grade the schools. Some schools have a grade three. How do you have a grade three? It shouldn't even be a grade three. It should only be good or bad. What do you mean, grade three? How do you become a grade three? Well, for one thing, when my kids were going to school, I would go up there all the time and draw a chair, which you can't even do that no more. Uh, because they came up with this thing, well, it's privacy, you know, people, I don't know what happened. I don't know what happened that they felt like uh privacy was a matter, was an issue. See, yeah, they can come up with stuff, but it's always for a uh uh, a different agenda. Yes, because when I, before they stopped volunteering, I was seeing, I was seeing thing. That they don't want to get out these teachers and stuff.
Good night.
Yeah. And um it, we ain't even talk about the shooting, stabbing and the dropout. Oh, boy. So I know they talking about they're going to uh take away the Board of Education and put one in place. We need to be uh ready for anything. That's what I say about these people that's running stuff. It don't seem like they just oh, we cross that broad, broad uh bridge when we get to it. No, you need to have this stuff already in place because you know, people they, they don't have the means of just switching lanes like that. We should already be prepared for different every ten years, we should be already have some kind of form of uh another action in place. Because if we would, if we had a black news station, we could keep up on this stuff that's going on. We could be educating each other and be prepared for, for what's coming down the pike. Because believe me, i- if this is something that you doing, you, you best to believe it's gonna change sometime within your lifetime. Two or three times. And you need to be prepared. We're not preparing ourselves for these psychopaths up there on the hill uh making all these different changes. So um and see, if we had had our own Board of Education, our own um education system, we will be better off. Because we will be teaching our kids. Our kids are totally different from white kids. They learn different. They socialize different. Yeah. And most of their parents was totally raised different. You're talking about children that are coming from a home that the parents only had a fifth grade education. And some that have to work two jobs just to make the bills. Keep the lights on. And then these black kids have to go to these schools where um ninety percent of their teachers are white. They don't live in the neighborhood. They don't know the same people that they know. Or go to the same store or the same restaurant. Now, this is something. And don't have the patience. That's why they deem our kids ADHD or, or uh special ed and, and, and stuff like that because they ain't got time. They don't have the patience. And then our kids have to uh graduate with these uh special uh diplomas and stuff where it's hard for them to get a higher education. So they're bound for a certain tubes. And see, the classroom is supposed to be a community, a community that is bound by respect and and moral aptitudes. There is not. You know how a man grows up to become a pimp and destroy a woman's life? Learned, learned behavior. Everything you see going on out here is a learned behavior. We live in a society where we constantly witness impatience. And it's getting worse by the day. Consider the roadways that are filled with impatient drivers and the exaggerated exasperated individuals we see waiting in lineups in the grocery store. We see impatience in our children who are used to watching television shows and videos that are geared to a short attention span. As teachers, we need to cultivate patience. Children learn at different ratios, rates, and in different ways. Some students contest our patience in that they seem to learn slowly, while other students' behavior in the classroom can challenge our patience. However, if we can be patient and not be reactive, learning and and behavior can change. Every teacher has had the experience of a teacher's behavior irritating us. But if we do not react in a negative way, there can be positive change. Once in one of my graduate courses, I had a young woman who did not seem to be attentive and miss some classes. I was somewhat irritated by her behavior, and I felt that she was getting very little out of the course. However, she wrote in her final paper that she had a caring oh, a eating disorder and how the class had been healing experience for her. Recently, I had a male student in one of my classes who seemed frustrated and unhappy in class. Yet, when I told the class that I would not be teaching next year because of administrative commitments, he stated that he was upset that he could not take my class in the fall. In both cases, I did not react in their behavior and found that patience, rather than reactivity, was the best approach. Meditation and mindfulness cultivate patience. Sitting quietly for twenty or thirty minutes, we learn to sit with a range of emotions and thoughts without trying to change them. People say that meditation is boring, but learning to sit with and watch the boredom cultivate patience that can transfer into our daily life and our teaching. Now, I know that's one thing that I was taught when I was going, when I was uh going to church with my kids. They would tell you every day to sit your children down and make them sit in a chair for um, you gotta gradually get to thirty minutes doing nothing. Because when you're sitting in church, you are sitting there. And kids, it's hard to just sit there, don't do nothing. And it's a learned behavior. You have to be taught how to be patient, how to be happy, how to, you have to be taught everything. All the way from walking to talking. And everything after that. All this stuff that you see these people doing up on the hill with the uh the stealing and the lying and the cheating and the fraud and all that was taught to them. That was a taught behavior. And and that's why, you know, when these people start talking about racism and white supremacy and all this stuff, though, that is a learned behavior. With psychopathic tendencies. You have to, really, all this hatred and all this ugliness that people learn, it does do something to their mental brain. And it also mutates their DNA to where it can be passed on to their kids. So, um I don't see why we don't have enough families and other parents getting together and discussing what to do about the education system. I don't see it. I go and pick up my grandson from school. And all I see is parents coming to school, picking their kids up and leaving. I don't really see any parents talking. Unless they probably know each other. Or cuz there's no more PTA. That's out. Why did they stop having PTA? For this very reason. Cuz they gonna cut out this, they gonna cut out that, and then all of a sudden, poof, it's all gone. And see, they cut out this and 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 replace it with this. And then they cut out something else and replace it with this, and then all of a sudden, it's all gone. So when are these parents gonna start getting together and say, no, you're not gonna do this? We have enough money, enough guns to make some changes of our own. But you know what's stopping us? We scared to die. And we scared to give up our Gucci, uh Prada, Michael Kors and Coach. Oh! And social media. Alright, hey, we got to do this.